I'm called to order the October eighth, twenty twenty four regular reading of Talon Town Council. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence if you're able to.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republican, which it stands. One petition.
Good catch. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so it's. Public petition time, item number five on our agenda. If you're online and you wish to speak, please raise your zoom hand or press nine. We'll alternate between the room and the zoom. So if you're here in person, you'd like to speak, you can come to the panel now. You could just give, yeah, you could sit, stand at your.
My name's Michael Carden. I live in Ellington. Apparently, the town is engaged with tax serve capital services for tax collections. A long time ago, I used to rent a property on Industrial Park Road. This company has sent me two letters. The last one was a bit alarming with some of their language in it. I don't have a record of all the communications that I've sent the prior tax collector. I don't have a date written down when I went and visited his office. He erroneously attributed some property in the building that I was using that the landlord owned as property of mine. This last notification said that the assessment was made in twenty sixteen, which is eight, going on nine years ago. After receiving a letter from them on May twentieth, I wrote Robin Gonzalez, the collection manager, ICC, the town manager, the chairwoman, and the talent tax collector. And none of those four people responded. And I got another letter on the ninth, which prompted me to come out to tonight's meeting. Simply put, as a renter in the property, I was not an owner of any property within the building that I should have been assessed on. And at that time, the assessment was twenty seven dollars and fifty eight cents. Not a big dollar amount, but on a matter of principle, I didn't own it. I don't owe taxes on it. I didn't owe taxes on it at that time. And I kind of met with my wits end here. The letter says that the issuance of the tax may warrant the tax collector to seize accounts and garnish wages, sue you in court, or report delinquencies to credit bureaus, all of which are extremely threatening and uncomfortable as a individual. So not sure what to do. As I mentioned, I spoke with the prior tax collector. The one time I visited him in his office, he was a bit disrespectful. And I, as I indicated in the letter that I wrote on May twenty eighth, I chose to walk out of his office without engaging in what I found to be disrespectful behavior.
Thank you. Typically, we just send back and forth. Brian, can we do a follow up?
Absolutely.
So if you could leave Brian contact information, Brian can follow up.
Sure. Yeah.
It looks like we have a couple people online. Let's start with Mr. Lappin.
Hello, Town Council, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, Don Lappin, one sixty eight Mountain Spring Road in Talon. I haven't been able to attend these meetings in person. As I've previously mentioned, I'm now working a third job to support myself because I have an unusable property still at one sixty eight Mountain Spring. I do want to be fair to the town. There has been a lot of progress as of late, and I'm thankful about that, about rectifying my water contamination issue. Most of the communications have come directly from Langin Engineering, which is fine. Mike Wilkinson has also communicated with me, but there's no need to double communicate. I will say that, like I said, the communication has been very good and the progress has been steady. My hope is that Scott Lappin is also aware of the progress because I believe his team will be needed, hopefully in the near future, to rectify the site restoration once the wells have, the previous wells have been abandoned properly, which should be taking place next week. So more to come, hopefully. Again, I appreciate the progress as of late. It's, it's been a slow going process overall, but I do appreciate and want to give kudos when it's due. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak? Sophie Johnson?
Good evening, everyone. My, um, my appearance before Town Council today is just to state for public record that I did send a letter to you regarding the permanent celebration committee and the, I guess, the coordination of the Facebook page. And I just wanted to state that on public record for it to go in that I sent the letter today, October eighth, in the afternoon. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to speak? Anyone else online? Seeing no more plans, we will move on to item six, which is public hearing items, which we have not tonight. Item seven A is reported the boards and committees responsible to the council.
Sure. Yeah, so Firehouse Subcommittee has not met since our last meeting, but that's okay because things continue to go on. So the windows I keep talking about are finally in, which is great. Go by, they look expensed. So thank you to Megan and whoever was there to help the person get in there to get that done. Obviously, we're gonna have the very kind of flash open ceremony, October sixth, twenty sixth, at eleven AM. Brian had reached out to Jacob and I yesterday to invite the chaplain, Jeff Gallagher, and also Rabbi to the ceremony to do some sort of prayer, because that's a tradition when something new opens up for a fire station or a fire truck. So I'm not sure if Brian has done that yet, but I thought that was a great thing to do. We'll be meeting in a couple of weeks to go over some other items. But other than that, things are going along great. I also requested a proclamation or citation. Not sure which one. State Rep Nuccio, State Rep Acker, and Senator Gordon. I'm not sure if Senator, Representative Nuccio will be able to make it. She's gonna be upstate. But Tim Acker and Jeff will be there to read whichever one they present. And they have more than excited. So hopefully Katie, you'll be there to read.
Unfortunately, I am out of state.
Okay, so then Jacob, you're in the hot seat to read it. But that's all I have for the Firehouse Subcommittee, I think. We haven't really met. Like I said, lots of.
Any other updates?
Sure. Jacob, do you want to get the ARPA updated? Do you want me to?
I've been here. We're just gonna meet tomorrow. We have a special meeting at six PM. As you probably know, the deadline to use that, all the funding for ARPA is approaching. It's gonna be here in just a couple of months. So we've got a list of potential items to consider to recommend to the council to spend that money. So should be a good conversation tomorrow.
And I, I do have a work on task force update. We did, of course, meet on September twenty third and then reported on that this September twenty fourth Town Health meeting. But I, there's been still some progress in the meantime. As Mr. Lappin mentioned, the water is on his property. The filtration systems have been built or installed. The wells are being properly closed next week. I do, in the last conversation we had, there was plans from the town to restore the property and before the winter. So that is, as Mr. Lappin mentioned, there's still work to do there, but that is on the horizon and the town is very much aware of that. I've been assured that it is happening in a timely manner. He, four one off properties, three of them are sort of on the right track. One of them, per conversations with Deep and the Health District, we have more investigation, more communication to do. And we do currently have some plans on the next step for the vineyards with hopefully additional communication going out to those properties very soon with the information that we have agreed upon with the Health District and Deep. But I think at this point, the Health District in particular has really stepped up to help support our residents in our town, and they are going to continue their work as we have requested of them, as the words of task forces request of them and town staff have, to create some communication campaigns, some education campaigns for residents so that if anyone thinks they might have a problem with their well or they're not sure what, what to do, they want to understand best practices for using ion filtration systems, we're gonna get all that information up from the Health District to communicate with our residents. Brian, is there any more?
No, perfect. Thank you.
Right. The next item on our agenda is reports of Town Council leaders. Councilor Murray, do you want to start?
So Economic Development Commission met last Wednesday. We had a good discussion, continued to discuss revisions to tax abatement ordinance and a suggestion will probably be made to the council relatively soon, probably by the end of the year. Additionally, just looking for my notes here. We continue to just have a general discussion about the economic development plan up in town, in particular in relation to, but sort of demographic, what sort of businesses would attract and work well with our demographic factors. So continued to be lots of good work up on the EDC. And they do have a vacancy. So if anyone is interested in, or if anybody knows someone who's interested in joining the EDC, they'd be happy to have you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilor Mina?
Yes. So for Conservation Commission, coming up, the twentieth of October, there's gonna be a grand opening celebration at the Why Not Conservation? And that's gonna be the grand opening for the Silo Trail. In large part, this was paid for courtesy of Tammy Nuccio in the previous council. It was unspent on close for the end of the year. I might be misquoting that, but.
There was a donation by Mr. Nuccio?
No, this was, so I was talking to Conservation Commission. They were saying that the the Adirondack footbridge, how that was paid for. So that, in large part, that's what the celebration is gonna be for.
That's okay.
Sure. The Air Culture Commission met yesterday or last night. And they talked about the voucher program, the success this year. They're obviously gonna continue to do that next year. There's a logo. They need to, they need to design a new logo. So they're debating whether or not to have a contest at the high school to see if maybe one of the high school students can develop the logo and some sort of prize for doing so. It's a great idea. We may actually have a student liaison, speaking of students. So reaching out to one or two individuals, kind of explain to them the responsibilities for that. They will be at the Harvest Fest, the second booth in front of Red White, and looking to hopefully recruit a couple of people. So you may know someone that, two people actually, that want to join the Air Culture Commission and looking for two additional members. Finally, there's going to be a winter market. So as the farmer's market closes, the winter market is going to open up at the rec center. We're gonna have the vendors there and the craft people, crafty farmers there as well. That's what.
Any other?
The last meeting of who was canceled?
Are we gonna get more information of this?
Every meeting, they talk about it.
Yeah.
It's just a slow process, but I mean, both parties are, are interested in the deal. So. And Brian, you have anything to cover on that?
Yes, I'll cover it in my town manager report.
Thank you.
So Recreation Advisory Board met yesterday, last night. Yeah. So, you know, he's helped come to present an idea to the advisory board from two fifteen, and he's taken Valley, apologizing, saying his name on. His idea is to get four back boxes to help reduce the mosquitoes and diseases around the Heron Cove area. So they talked about that for a little bit. And they talked about using the rest of the power money for the little league portion. They're gonna get us, I believe, a girl's softball scoreboard at the middle school. They talked about the flash sale that's gonna start October twenty first, that starts at eight AM. That's the use, trying to use as much ARPA money. It's gonna be going off for a week. Whatever is not spent from that is gonna be returned to the ARPA committee and figure out what to do with what's left there. He's estimating maybe about ten thousand dollars will be left there, which is pretty good because it's over a hundred thousand, I think, that's right now. The Town Hall Trick or Treat, I think, is October twenty fourth, five thirty to seven. I'm not sure if Brian's gonna cover that. It's Tom Andrew.
There was.
But I think that's, no, I'm sorry. So that's all I really, really have home there, Katie.
Thank you.
Oh, and he just, I'm sorry. Then he just mentioned the Sider Mill Road race went really well. I think he said it was the highest number of runners saved that, so.
Yep. Planning and zoning did not peak last night. They're regularly scheduled meetings. They're supposed to be, well, last night, they're gonna have two back to back on the twenty first of twenty, something like that. And then the land acquisition advisory committee is looking to set up a meeting in the next couple of weeks. But we haven't met since the, since the last, since our last meeting.
Wonderful. As I said, last meeting, the September meeting of the Historic District Commission was canceled. It looks like there will be a an October meeting, not next week, but the week after, I think. Crog is working on healthy development proposals for next legislative session. They look pretty familiar to me. And as I said before, I think the commitment and the amount of time that the Health District is putting in supporting us on well related issues is quite remarkable and has been very, very helpful, especially navigating multiple state agencies. So I continue to be very impressed with. So that is reports of liaisons. The next thing on our agenda is new business. Item eight point one is introduction to RST Corey.
All right. Thank you, Chair. With us tonight is our new resident admin resident trooper. So he's basically replacing Kevin Eklund and Lieutenant Haywood, who works closely with Corey as well, out of Troops to the Commander, Troopsy are both here. Corey's here to, come on up, gentlemen. And Corey's, you're familiar with Lieutenant Haywood, but Corey's here to introduce himself. I'm very happy to have him while his state police resume says two years. He's got ten years of corrections under his belt, which is very good to know. Just being able to deal with people and deescalate and talk to people. And you'll, you'll get that from Corey moving forward, starting right now.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, Council. My name is Corey Brennan, Connecticut State Trooper. For two years, as he said, ten years before that, with the Department of Corrections in the Air Force as well, currently still at the National Guard for the past approximately ten years. I live in the town of Wellington. Sorry for all that. But the amount of things to do in Wellington is, I'm in Talon a lot. With Chaplain Gallagher's cops soccer team, with just the community. I love the town. So I am excited to be a part of the town, to help with the schools, with the community members, working day in and day out with the same group of people to attend meetings. If there's anything that I can assist with, any of, any of your meetings that you would like to hear from me in regards to anything, flexible in attending any meetings that you guys see fit for. I believe that's about it. Anything you guys would like to know or?
No, thank you, Corey. No, you didn't. Fantastic. I tell you that to this point, he's been highly communicative with myself, to include yesterday's incident. I'll get to that in my town manager's report. And anytime that I've reached out to him, and obviously never not doing work hours, he's, he's very receptive to taking the calls as well. And everything we've asked him to do, including working with the wall on some issues, schools. He's been absolutely fantastic. And I'm already starting to send him emails from residents too. So thank you very much, Corey. Lieutenant, do you have anything?
Nope. I just wanna say, no, what I came here for, I was surprised my first time coming here to hear that you hadn't seen a CSP representative at a town council meeting, and it sounded like several years. And I mentioned to you that one of my main initiatives, when we finally did replace Kevin, was to make good on my promise to say, hey, we should have some kind of regular occurrence at these to just give you an opportunity to ask any questions or address any concerns in the town. And, and you know, the town manager does a phenomenal job of letting us know what the town concerns are to allow us to just prepare a little bit when we come in. So can anytime you have questions, want to hear from us, please do let us know. And the town manager will send us the highlights of information you're looking for, just to give us the opportunity to prepare. More than happy to have Corey or myself, depending on the subject matter, come in and meet with you anytime.
Thank you. If there are any questions?
I just want to say welcome. We're glad to have you. I do think it's a good idea, like, you know, every once in a while, quarterly or whatever, just to have sort of an update or whenever, I think, local lines of communications are a great idea. But overall, just glad to have you. So glad to be here. And of course, I agree with all our.
Yeah, I was just gonna make a quick comment. Oliver, oh, sorry, Jimmy. Thank you for yesterday. I don't know who was there, but I'm sure you were there. So thank you. It seemed like everything was all controlled and communicated, especially the superintendent. So thank you for that. And I look forward to working with you. You know, we've had a conversation. We're very responsive. So we appreciate that. So it's good to have somebody. See, finally. I know. What's the woman that works down there?
Laurie Sherman?
She's very excited to have you there.
Fantastic to work.
Councilor Murray?
Again, thank you for coming tonight. It's great to, to meet you. I wish I could be there tonight to be in person, but still great to, great to have you. I, I like the idea, like, like Councilor Moran said, of maybe having a resident state trooper presence every once in a while, just to kind of give, give the town a little bit of a pulse of what's, what's going on in the town, any issues that we should be aware of as a council. You know, I know Brian does a great job, but it's definitely good to get that perspective. So maybe that's something, you know, that between myself and Brian and Katie, and you know, we could kind of figure out what that looks like. But I, I do really appreciate that, that interest, interest in, in having a good relationship with the council. And again, wishing you the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
I would also say welcome. It is wonderful to see a resident state trooper just come in to say hi to us and kind of introduce themselves. As Lieutenant mentioned, that hasn't happened in my tenure. So this is a really wonderful, hopefully, start of a good tradition for us. Just, I just kind of have a few questions for the tenants to get in front of us. Last time you were here, we talked about getting some statistics on data and information about prime numbers in town. Every time we have Brian about these and his monthly town manager's report, we see the same statistics that we've been seeing for years and years. Could you give us an update on how that's going?
So legal, our legal affairs unit is working with the Colonel's Office to come up with a different product to provide to the towns because it is understood that what we're given is not the best product we could be putting out. So that has been escalated up to legal affairs, who's working with the Colonel to figure out exactly what we can provide without violating any policy on our end or any, you know, privacy type stuff related to certain information. So it is being worked on. I don't have an estimated completion date on when that project will finish, but it is actively being worked.
Is there anything we as a council could do to help move that along? Would a call, would a letter, would anything be helpful?
I think, you know, I really would respond it is the request from the town manager. So I, I don't know. And I don't know, I'm sure the town manager follows up with legal to figure out the status of that, but.
He, he, that's not his purview so much. I'll handle it though. I haven't heard from him, but I, I did hear they're making progress. But that's no light on these gentlemen at all.
Sure, absolutely. Absolutely. Okay. Well, thank you for that. It's wonderful to meet you. We look forward to seeing more of you around our community.
It's wonderful you're pulling me over.
She doesn't have a license, so. All right, guys. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Have a great evening, bud.
Good job.
Great. Item eight point two on our agenda is the annual meeting of the Talon Public Library Foundation Incorporated to discuss the reappointment of the foundation directors, the twenty three, twenty four complements, twenty four, twenty five goals. There's more here. You guys did such a wonderful job. I don't need to.
I appreciate that. Yes, tonight is the second Tuesday in October, or first Tuesday in October, the second Tuesday. And so this is the annual meeting of the Talon Public Library Foundation. My name is Linda Liam. I'm the president of the Talon Public Library Foundation Board of Directors. And tonight, joining me is Mary Anne, who you all know, who's our relatively new library director. She's an ex officio member of our board as well. It seems like you guys have a full agenda, and I've detailed all the information in a letter, but I'll just go through a few of them. Usually I go into more detail when I give my presentation. But I'll just, maybe for people who don't know, whether you're on Zoom or if you're in the room and you're not familiar with the Talon Public Library Foundation, we're a support organization for the public library. And we have an endowment. And so with that endowment, the funds that are generated from the investments on that endowment are used for the enhancement of the library. And so our board in coordination works very closely with the library director and her staff and the priorities that she has for her vision of the library and use that money to enhance that. We, we have several different areas that we use it for, which I'll go into in more detail. But that's basically the, the mission of our library foundation. So the first item that I want to talk about was our foundation directors. Every year, we have a few people whose term expires. And the people whose term expires have been requested to stay on the board. So at this point, we don't have any current vacancies. So at this point, we don't have any current vacancies. So we delivered, the way I I put the letter together this year is we delivered support in three major areas of funding to the library. And the first one was to just generally make the library of like a vital vibrant hub of talent. And some of the things that kind of fell under that under that bucket of funds were, we supported the 14th season of the Ink to McCain Author Series. And we had some really good authors this year, award winning authors. We provided telescopes, some programs for library, including STEM building and reptile program, eclipse program, we provided some puzzles at the request of the director and we hosted a puzzle competition tripod pickleball set. So those type of things that will bring people into library that maybe didn't necessarily know that those things were available. Those are some of the things that the the foundation supports. In addition, the majority of the money that we give to the library goes to support digital, many electronic resources that have become more popular as well as the mainstay of what's offered in the library. So I I guess I really want to point out that we are the sole, the foundation is the sole source of funding for HUBLA, which is the popular streaming service for eBooks and other digital media. And just within the past year, we've we've given $12,000 to support HUBLA for the town of Tallent. And then every year we're finding that, you know, it's where it's it's going up, it's getting more and more popular. We also have other databases that are used by town residents such as Ancestry.com, JobNow. We've also joined a new library speakers consortium, which I don't know if any of you have been able to join speakers and library authors talks remotely now. And so there's programs that you can join in virtually. Also, we have mobile hotspots for people who might not have, you know, connectivity in their home as well as some other digital resources that are listed here. The third area of support that we really focused on this year was an upgrade of the Maker Space and the Business Center. And so we provided a 3D printer, laptop to run that printer, a filter box, a cricket machine with some of the accessories to go with that cricket machine and also a film scan. And so the last area, we also, we need to provide funding for our administrative functions as a board. So we can continue to be a vital resource to the library for many years to come. That includes things like our website, some publicity. And of course, we have an investment manager and we have to pay management, 1% management fees for that, for our endowment. So our goals for this upcoming year include the Talent Oral History Project, which we've been involved with for the past year and a half. We're continuing to record and transcribe those oral histories. Eventually that will accumulate into a like a live performance as well as multimedia experience for people in the town to experience that. We're hoping this year to have an open house for our donors, past and present, because we've had some quite significant, some very significant donors that have donated to our endowment. That's something that you'll hear more about coming up. And then, of course, we're just going to continue to focus those grants to the library in coordination with Mary Ann. And I think lastly, the last thing I wanted to mention is, you know, I provided our budget here that the board of director approved, but our financial records are provided to the town financial officer every month as well as to our CPA annually for examination. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys might have about what we do or who the board is, or I mean, the mission of the board does, or any other questions you have.
Just a comment, just want to thank you, I mean, you know, the budget team is always tough and there's never, you know, never enough to go around. So I think the foundation provides great resources to elaborate that we wouldn't otherwise have. And so I think it enhances a lot of the the resources that our community has. It's it's in large part to the foundation. So I just want to thank you and all members of the foundation following, and all, you know, the differences lost, thank you.
Thanks, that's been a long.
Sure, so a couple of questions, so the directors that you have, is there a limit on the number of times they can basically read?
We do not have any term limits.
Okay, and typically where does where do directors come from?
Um, they're members of the, there's. We haven't had any turnover on our board for probably eight years.
A lot.
And we've had probably two new members, but the, you know, a lot of the members have been longtime members, 10, 12 year members. They've been patrons of the library, they've been some of our former town council members, people who are interested in library activities and want to. There are seven right now.
That's great.
We have two ex officio members.
This is actually a very good year, I didn't realize how much, how much you guys actually did for library. You mentioned two things that caught my ear, cricket, that's probably my, that's probably my, my ignorance on technology, but.
Um, I've actually never used a cricket machine, but I think it is like a group, like a very sophisticated die cut printer that can, yes, craft cutting machine.
Your kids are too old, Joe, if your kids were younger, you'd know.
Yeah, you're right. And then you mentioned a film scanner.
Yes, so, so it was purchased by the foundation to put the business, the the Business Center or the the Maker Space. And so it will be have the ability to both to change like pictures to digital. That's something that the, I'm maybe marrying a little bit more about, I actually haven't used yet, but.
Like movie pictures to digital or like?
Like photo pictures.
And film or slides or photos and it will create digital file for you.
So like patrons of the of the library can come in, do their own scanning, things like that? That's great.
Yeah, I just wanted to come up with what Counselor Moran was saying. I'd say I've been a long time resident of Tallent, but having moved back here and started a family of my own, even those unfortunate years of mandates, I mean, the the library always kind of seemed like a nice warm little hub for the town. I mean, I've got a lot of new residents that have moved into town with young kids. Just seems like a well oiled machine down there from the holiday events that happen, the guests that come. It's really just beautiful, all the changes that have been made. And I think what we've used the most is some of the coupons and subs that you guys use to other museums. We're learning centers like Service Village is one we frequent all the time, so.
The foundation's happy to support a lot of that, actually the friends of the library actually purchased the the museum passes too, but I have to give all the credit to Mary Ann and her predecessor Barbara for that well oiled machine of that the library is. There are several organizations that support.
Yes, doing a great job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming every every October, it is very reliable and it's great to get all this information.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is 8.3 consideration of a resolution for the town council to waive some sections of policy A176 dash four concerning disposal of surplus personal public property for discarded town library books.
Yes, thank you Chair, with us, obviously we have we have our library director Mary Ann and Mike Wilkinson from our office to discuss this. So in brief, and Mary Ann, you can come up, and before I hand it to her, in brief, we get a lot of books into the library. And sometimes there's doubles, sometimes a lot of donations and they have to weed through the books and now it's what to do with them. We can, you know, sell them and and get the the funding and put it into C N R E, but it would literally be pennies. This is to discuss, you know, for council to to waive sections A, B, and D of the attached in your packet, policy A176 dash four concerning disposal of surplus personal public property for discarded library books. So Mary Ann, go ahead, thank you.
Thank you, it's nice to be here with all of you, get to see you face to face. And I'd like to thank Linda and the members of the foundation and all the families that have remembered the foundation and their generosity and also the friends of the library. This is my fifth library in my library career and I'm just overwhelmed by the generosity and the sense of community and the support behind the library, which allows us to do our jobs well for all of you and the patrons. So so thank you. So as Brian explained, obviously we order new books every week and we only have so much room. So the part of maintaining a collection of libraries is a weeding process. And how that is done is we will have the Ovation, which is our library consortium, will run reports for us and you can tell how often books have been used. So recently a report was run and it was books that had not had any circulations in the last seven years. So once we get a report like that, then we look at it and we see, you know, is it a local author? Is it a topic of special interest? Is there any reason why we would not weed this book from the collection and those books are retained? But the books that are chosen to be let go of become discards. And every town that I worked at, library discards generally go to the friends of the library for their book sale purposes. And our friends of the library, just this past fiscal year donated over $8,000 in various things, including museum passes, the book page subscription for ripe readers advisory, the prizes for the summer reading, which the kids were and adults this year were so excited about, some of the software expenses. So it's just, you know, like the foundation and friends do so much to support the library and we would ask that you would consider allowing them to receive the discards to sell in their bookstore home.
Mike, you want to have anything to, can I ask Mike, Mike Wilkinson, you have anything to add?
No, that's that's pretty much all that, she did a great summary, both of you.
This is the thing we've done in the past.
Not that, Mike, have you ever done this before?
No, we've never done it before and the plan is to just have it done in going forward. I think the plan is Mary Ann will periodically give us a list that Brian can just sign off on and then she'll give those to the friends to be sold. So that would, so it's never been done before, so but it would be going forward, this was how we would do it.
So it would come back to council on a regular basis?
No, 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 it would, no, Brian has the ability to sign off on certain things if they're little, little no value. So just to, just so we have some kind of paper trail, she'll give us a list, you know, periodically that he'll sign off on that we know that these were given to the friends.
Okay. So are we being asked to permanently waive sections A, B, and D of the policy going forward?
That's the way it's written unless you want to do it for a certain period of time, but it, I don't, I don't think you'd want to constantly deal with this on a yearly basis. And I don't, it's not that much money per year, so the plan, it's written to go forward just so she can do this periodically and and then give the money to the friends going forward.
For perspective, Mary Ann, how many books a year?
Yeah.
Well, it's it's hard to judge because I came in in April and we didn't end up in that in some time. So right now, because we were kind of playing catch up and you literally couldn't put fit books on the shelves, there's probably like 20 boxes of books right now, but that's highly unusual, you know, so. It really depends on the collection and how crowded it is.
And then about a rock the adult book.
Adult, yeah, for a hardcover book.
Yep.
We use smaller boxes, so I don't know, maybe 15 or so in a box.
So I might be a little biased because these are some of my favorites, but hopefully with my daughter now getting books from the library, we've kept magic school bus.
Yes.
And little bear books.
It's more often the adult than the children's because we tend to, if a popular author has one coming out, we hold copies. And depending on the titles and the authors, sometimes those are reserved as a book club collection. So that when a group was, I think six of them that we order books for for the book clubs, you know, we don't have to go out to as many libraries and request copies, so, no, definitely little bear. Lots of favorite finds.
I just was wondering that with growing this popularity, the Frosties Bazaar, it's usually toward the end of the year, close to Christmas time, usually we'll do Toys for Tots or try to give things away to less fortunate interstate children or whoever's at the time. I was wondering if maybe take some of these books and push them that way, I don't know how much use we would get for that, but I know usually we have big stands of toys and things that we collect for for those types of programs that hit a year, so.
I missed the first part, were you saying it like I said again?
This is at Frosties Bazaar, which is usually at St. Matthew's Church.
Oh.
Christmas time, I was wondering if we could, would we be able to use some of those, push those books that way that are unused or?
That's up to you, it really doesn't happen as often for children's books, but there are children's books. A lot of times when children's books are weeded, it's because they're damaged. You know, they get pages ripped or they get, you know, colored in or whatever, but.
These boxes are young adult, adult.
Mostly adult, yeah, sometimes young adult, you know.
It was just something that's.
Yeah, but that's not to say that could be. My past library, we used to do books retreats on Halloween and we would save discard books and kids could trick or treat for a book, that was one of the similar giving to the community. But I'm not opposed to doing anything like that, obviously it's going to help children, so.
Yeah, that was my food for thought really, so.
So just a little up there, so once, you know, if we approve this, the the books then go to the friends and then they they have like a book sale and then the funds that are generated from that sort of are put back into the library, is that right?
Yes, the the friends, all of the funds that the friends raise go back to the library with the exception of their annual dues to the Connecticut State Library Friends Group and any postage that they pay for mailings that they do for their membership in the Festival of Trees flyers. But other than that, everything gets turned back into the library.
Is there a motion then to approve the resolution? Is there a segment?
Second.
Second by Counselor Ryan. We're going to do a roll call vote, Counselor Morrie.
Aye.
Counselor Kim? Counselor Jay?
Aye.
Counselor Utah?
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Agenda 8.4 is inventory of town property and jail museum passes.
Thank you Chair, so, you know, when I got here a couple of years ago, David told me about desire to start inventorying all the town land that we have. There's a lot of parcels that that's not a lot of value to the town that we're holding on to that could be potentially sold, could be put back on the tax rolls. And Dave, his own volunteered to put this inventory together and if you give you take a look and you should have the back. You know, there's the the appraised values, the acquisition price, you know, it's got a lot of information here. The, if you look at the map, the color map there, the the conservation areas, we can't sell those. And they're under the purview of the Conservation Commission maintained by the Conservation Corps. The unassigned open space is is a bit of an oddity that was done by our zoning or by by zoning years ago, basically through the 80s and 90s and the housing boom. And there, the the rule was if you're going to build a new development and you had a chunk of land, if you were going to build that development, the town got 20% as unassigned open space to basically ensure the town never gets gobbled up completely by housing. We own it, we can't do anything with it, is basically how that's defined now in in short. Education facilities speak for themselves, leased property, we have very, very little. The Campbell's Farm, I I believe is one of them and what else is there, Dave?
There's the solar farm on South River.
And the solar farm on on South River. Miscellaneous, the red ones, those are ones that potentially could be sold and they're not a ton of them. There's they're they're scattered throughout town. Purple, you'll see municipal buildings, those are your firehouses, town hall, borderhead, those types of buildings. Orange is nonprofit and Housing Authority and there's only two of those in town. You can't even see the other one, it's over on Reed Row. And then there's Park and Cemetery Land and the Talon Business Park. And that's down off of, down by Gerber, formerly Gerber. And there's some lots for sale there, we want to advertise those or get them to a realtor and get those those pushed out a little more of this. Basically, as you drive up to the bubble, there's a couple of spaces in there. It's not the greatest of land, but we believe that's, things can be done with that. If we were to sell, there's a process on how we do sell, Dave, I'm sure we'll be able to go through that, but it's very well defined and. If we were to sell, there's a process on how we do sell, Dave, I'm sure we'll be able to go through that, but it's very well defined and. We want to convene the land, the land acquisition commi- commission to discuss. These possible disposals and then make a recommendation to the, to town council. One of the things on the agenda you see is the outlier here is the jail museum. In town, it's, it's in need of repair and with us here is Megan Masla, who's done a lot of research on it, but. Very generally speaking, it costs the town of Talon about thirteen thousand a year for heat, electricity, lights and such. And we got about four hundred and fifty for starters, a thousand dollars in repairs and upkeeps. Now those are. Typically more because we, the town, do it and there's, there's a lot of strings attached when you are redoing a historical building. We had. We got a grant to have an engineering company, an architect come in and help us design those changes and put a price on. The current tenant, long time tenant, does a great job there, has been there. Their, their current lease is for one dollar a year. And extends out. When I first got here and we started looking at it, we had a meeting with multiple staff. Most of my team unanimously recommended to sell the jailhouse museum. Difficult proposition, I agree. And so certainly that is a possibility. Sell it and get it back on the tax roll. Sounds great. I think, you know, looking at both sides of this, the best outcome of this would be to, and this is my own personal opinion now, sell it to a nonprofit. Certainly the nonprofit that's in there now at a, at a, you know, incredibly low rate so that they can have the building. I think is, is a good suggestion. But I'll give it to Dave. Do you have any thoughts?
Yeah. I think you did a great job summarizing all of that. Yeah, what I, what I would note is it, it looks like a lot of these miscellaneous properties are the ones that. Would be easy to remove or, or, or to put up for sale if. If that was something the town council wanted to do, I think it's, as Brian had mentioned, maybe good to. Venn it more thoroughly with the land acquisition advisory committee and then, and then break forth the list to you, i- if that's, if that's what you'd like to do. On the business park side, we've got these two lots that are still left over. They're not as good as the other lots in the business park, but they potentially have some developable space. I, I think maybe to get those moved, it, it may be move us to enlist the services of a, of a real estate agent and. And, and get them on the MLS and advertise them more aggressively that way with, with your consent. Otherwise, yeah. Selling unassigned open space, it's not necessarily impossible. If it's something the council felt strongly about. We would want to get a legal opinion and see how we move forward on it, but it's, it's very challenging to do because we. Sort of made the commitment that we were gonna keep it as open space when we, when we took it in the first place. So. I guess that's, that's where I would stand and certainly Megan's here to answer any questions on the, on the jail museum.
So are we allowed to ask questions specific about miscellaneous? Like, are we doing that later or is it really about narrowing this down?
If we were, so what he want, what David and, and I, our concept is, this would, we wouldn't make these decisions. It would, like anything else, go to the land acquisition commission. They'd make recommendations to you, then you guys vote and decide on them. But, but if you ever have any questions, Alex, I'm happy you're.
I just had a quick.
Go ahead.
Just because it's been a question mark for me as long as I've been living here and I know where it is and maybe what it's used for. I think it's oh, six, eight on the map. But I believe it's eight, no, no. Very historical area. I know that we get, which is right adjacent to St. Matthews, right on the hill there. Is that still town use?
TPW stores. TPW storage.
Yeah, so that would never really be.
I wouldn't say, look at it, we're open to anything. I, I don't have a vote in this.
Okay.
So if you're looking to, to move something, you know, maybe with the park facility and such like that, I'm, you know.
That was just one that I was always curious about. It seemed like.
That's basically the wood shop. Um, is the best way to put it, where the wood would be if they need to make something, that's where it's. Not very going.
Yeah, okay.
So this, this came up, obviously, planning in some committee as well. And so thanks to David, this was a lot of work and for the PCC. At least broadly speaking, like I'm certainly in favor of ways to get. Especially the miscellaneous property that's sort of not being used, we're not generating any sort of revenue. You know, getting that, you know, as we take it case by case, but getting that onto the rules to generate whatever additional. Property taxes we can for the town. So I think just compiling all this, David, I appreciate it is a, is a really big start in that way. So. I think it's a good thing and I think, I think I remember right that the PCC was largely of the opinion that, you know. If we could sell some of those properties to even just like neighboring property owners, right? It gets it back to the rules and it helps to generate some, so I think, I think it's a good idea, just thinking, yeah.
Hey, Katie, you said my name, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So thanks for preparing this, this really detailed report. It was, it's definitely a lot of good information in there. So, I'm sorry if we've covered this earlier, but, but if we sold any of these parcels, where would the funds go? Would just like the non-recurring or the unassigned fund balance or is there, there any others funds that they would go into?
Yeah, so the, so the sale policy, just to walk you all through it. What has to happen is it immediately goes to adjacent property owners who can make an, an offer for the assessed value of the property. If an adjacent property owner makes such an offer, then, then we would, would be able to sell it to them. If not, it goes to. An open bidding process and the council has a lot of flexibility as to what it determines to be in, in, in open bid and. Sort of like we said on the last agenda, you know, these provisions are all kind of waivable if, if the council wishes to do so. And then ultimately the, the money is deposited into the general fund.
Thank you, Dave. Yeah, I think it'd be great to, to look into selling, you know, the. Parcels in, in yellow up on this year. I think it's a great, great opportunity. I, I have some specific questions about the, the jailhouse. So.
Can I stop you for a second before we do the? Do, do we need to clarify?
Lisa, can you clarify where the money goes on a, on a sale?
Yes, usually it goes to the capital non-recurring. That's been our policy. And then it's used for other capital items and such. Also, I think you did mention that. There, depending on the value of the property and all that, you may have to go to referendum. To get the authority to sell any properties, but it all depends on the value and, and our charter outlines all of that. That's all.
Thank you.
I bring the questions I asked.
Council Mari, could I ask you a? Questions on the jail museum and we can do the property questions and then do the jail museum secondary?
Sure, that's fine. Can I just ask a follow up for what Lisa just said?
Yes, please.
Okay, Lisa, do you happen to know like what the value is that you'd have to go to a referendum for? And if that applies to any of these properties?
I do not know if it applies to any of these properties. I'd have to look at the charter. I think it's part of our charter. So I mean, I can, I could look it up while we're, while you're still talking about other things and get back to you if you'd like.
That sounds good. Thank you. Alright, I'm done for now, Kitty.
Thank you. Are there any other questions about? The property?
Yeah, and just quickly, David, just kind of based on what you were saying. If there was an open bidding, whoever would buy said property? Is, is that? Per the intended use that we might decide what it would be or this would really be open to?
So, so you have, the way this works, you have discretion. Within, once it's gone, the, and the neighboring property owners. You have the. Ability to determine what constitutes a reasonable offer. And it says the council may waive the reasonable offer criteria if it determines the sale to be in the best interest of the town. So, so you'd probably have to vote separately if you were to. Not take the highest offer, but, but you potentially could if there were a reason to.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to kind of follow up with that question, these properties are all, the use of these properties. Is all constrained by their current zoning?
So in the event that these properties cease to be town-owned properties, they would be subject to the zoning regulations of the zone. Which they reside.
Okay, and that would. Dictate what these properties could be used for in March.
Yes.
So in other words, if there's, you know, point two acres next to me in a residential area, someone couldn't buy it and build a commercial building.
Correct. They probably wouldn't be able to meet the setbacks.
Did that answer your question, Alex?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so Brian, could you tell us what like next steps are for this property? Valuation that.
Condean?
Yeah.
Land acquisition.
Okay.
Have them start modeling through all this.
Okay.
And then they'll, they'll come forward with their recommendations. The only, the outlier again is the jail museum as I have capital budget coming up. And we have to consider, you know, does the town want to tackle, you know, four hundred and fifty K debt now. It's not to say Megan can't work magic and find some grants. She's very good at that. The, the likelihood of getting even the majority of that is extremely. Slim and she can answer any questions about that, but you know, we'll move through that in the capital process one way or the other. At this point, I'm still budgeting to have the building thirteen thousand or so. Out of TPW in regards to fuel maintenance and such. But, but again, you know, I, I hate to lose it. If you could sell it to a nonprofit for a dollar.
Yeah.
That'd be great. So, you know, I, we might want to be generous to whoever takes over.
So, but in terms of this. Land directory. The next step is for it to go to land acquisition?
Yeah.
Okay. And their meeting's doomed, right? There's a meeting.
In the next couple of weeks. Is that accurate, Dave?
That is accurate.
And I see that Lisa has her hand up.
Okay, I do have your answer. Let me just lower my hand. And. It's section C ten dash three of our town charter and basically the transfer of. From the town of any interest in real estate, having a value of less than one percent of the total town budget for the current fiscal year. The council would have the authority to do it, but if the value of it is over that amount, then you have to go. To a town-wide referendum in accordance with the state statutes.
Thank you. Thank you. Any more questions on the town inventory?
So this is a question for you, Brian, just because you've been a part of the sound for a long time. Are there any, just, just because I'm, I'm curious to hear your sentiments too. Are there any of these that stick out to you that are interesting and then on the issue on the other foot, any that you? In your opinion, would prefer not to? Change or, or think that their, their current uses is more than valuable?
Just heavy question, what I want to do, much like the library books. You know, let's try to weed through and get, you know, these little slices of land here and there. That we could potentially, you know, in budget times coming up, we're looking, you know, picking the building up and shaking it upside down on the couch cushions for pennies here, you know. And, and for us to be carrying all these extra properties scattered all over town, little slices of pies here and there. You know, if I were a homeowner and I could, I had the ability to pick up another two acres for a pretty, pretty good price. And it abuts my yard, I might want to do that. So that, that's. My main interest is those types of properties.
Okay.
That are abutting someone's yard, they might want to latch into to get a little more land.
Any ones that you just weighed from, just in your opinion?
No, these are, when you start weeding through these, you're gonna see it's case by case.
Yeah.
Of what's attached, everything's got strings attached. But Dave, do you have anything that, any, any that you want to lease right away and we could sell?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I think that, yeah, the obvious ones are, are, I, I think the little quarter acre unopened right of way pieces. You know, we, we, we kept land to the side in case we have a bunch of road through one day, but there's another development came in right behind it. Isn't, didn't use that road right away. Yeah, some of the other ones are probably a little bit stickier and, and as they get, as they get a little bit bigger. And, you know, we can have those discussions in more detail as they, as they come up.
Alright, we're ready to pivot to the jail museum? Yep, Council Mari, do you want to start on the jail museum?
Thank you. Okay, so as looking through the, the cost estimate there upon Angus' page, fifty of the, the PDF. Just wanted to confirm, so that, that is the, the cost estimate that was done using the grant funding. That we got earlier from Shippo?
Right.
Okay, familiar, okay. And. Is all of that work like necessary to do right away? Is it, is it all like important to the structural integrity of the building? Or is it possible to? Stretch out the, the duration of the project or, or break it up into smaller projects, I guess is a better way to phrase it.
So probably the best way I can explain. We've got, we've got really two separate projects. I think the handicap ramp is one project and then you have the porches, which are a separate issue. The issue that we have with the handicap ramp is that it currently doesn't meet ADA accessibility. And it is in like complete disrepair. So it's rotten, there's structural issues and that's really an egress issue. And then you have the porches. The porches have structural issues. The piers are out of place. The, the posts have been knocked out of place. There's rot on the framing, the decking is, is rotted and the roof above them also need to be replaced. So. One of the things that happens when you're dealing with structures that are having structural issues and disintegrating really. The longer you put those off, the worse the condition is going to be. If we wait a few more years, you're gonna have a bigger. Issue probably with it. I'm not an expert. And in buildings, I don't know if I could give you an estimate on how long we can wait to fix it. But I think that at some point, it's possible that those entrances may be unsafe and we would have to maybe block those off in public access.
The very first person to mention selling it to me. Was our building inspector. When I was, you know, scratching my head and saying, what are we gonna do? I mean, this is gonna, it's only gonna get worse. You know, the, the roofs, the windows, just everything. He was the one that said, we should sell it. So that's from our building inspector. He's not a finance guy, so.
Yeah. Just a couple other, other things here. So. I guess my concern with the issue is, is not, you know, whether we sell it or we keep it, but. Whatever happens to it, I would, the, the worst thing that I would want to happen is for us to. Say sell it and then give it to someone who just can't take care of it, you know, and they're not gonna be able to, to keep it up and it becomes dilapidated. And eventually condemned building. So I was looking through some of the grants that were presented up in the packet and. Megan, I was wondering if you could just kind of run through and maybe just give like a. Like a prognosis of like what the chances of, of the, the town getting the grants that it's eligible for and. Give us a little bit more information about the nonprofit grants too.
Sure, so I, I listed four funding options in the memo that I put in the, in the packet. Two of them, the town would be eligible to apply for. Two of them, the town is not eligible. It would have to be. A nonprofit entity that would apply. And that's not to say we couldn't work potentially collaboratively with the Historical Society or something. To put an application forward. All four of these options are not sufficient to cover the cost of. The repairs that are needing to be done. There's gonna be a town match that's associated with it of some kind. I might just kind of go through these. The first one is the Historic Restoration Fund Grant and that's through the Department of Economic and Community Development. The awards are up to two hundred thousand dollars. It's a one-to-one town match. The town is eligible to apply for it. Um, the town is eligible to apply for it. Um, there aren't applications open currently, but there would be another round in twenty twenty five that we could look into. Um, there is the Historic Rehabilitation Tax Credit, um, and this one is a little bit, um. Maybe beyond like my experience, um, but the way it's been explained to me is that we pay upfront for the cost to do the repairs. And we will be reimbursed with a like twenty five percent credit, um, in a voucher that we could sell to a utility. So there's like, oh, there's a little bit more like work that has to be done with it, but it's a, it's a hundred percent of cost upfront cost. On that one.
And Megan, if I.
Sure.
Trapped you real quick. That particular program, um, they often help, uh, Shippo. Uh, will often help facilitate the sale of the voucher.
Okay.
And Eversource is buying these vouchers, um, at this point, or has been for the past couple of years in very good faith. So, okay, good, it is, it is something that happens quite frequently.
Do you know, you know, typically what we get on the dollar?
It's one to one.
They're buying.
They're five hundred percent.
Yep. Yes, yes. So that would be, uh, up to twenty five percent of the, of the project cost. Um, and then the other two, um. One is the Good to Great Program, um, and that's through Connecticut Humanities, which is an affiliate of the National Endowment for the Arts. Um, they, they have to be a five oh one C three to apply. Um, the wards do go up to five hundred thousand. Um, and it's a twenty percent cash match required. Um, it's not currently open for applications, but, um, I've heard a rumor that. They may be coming around soon.
Yes, Good to Great was funded, uh, by the legislature last year, um, for two. Dollars, I think. Um, the Good to Great Program is incredibly popular. Um, so they do anticipate more applications than they have funds to distribute. And I, um. I pre-gamed this a little, uh, with the arts. People at DCD, um, and they had some concerns about the jail museum in Tolland being inappropriate. Recipient of this because the museum doesn't participate in any of the regional jail museum, uh, functions. The program is called Good to Great and, um, they might not meet the kind of good, uh, threshold. Um, because they're not participating in more regional.
And then the last opportunity that I was, um, able to find specific for historic properties. Um, is through Preservation Connecticut. They have the, um, seventeen seventy two foundation. Um, those, um, grant awards go up to ten thousand dollars. Um, there is a match requirement. Um, currently they are accepting like an intent to apply. You sort of have to have your project vetted for approval. Um, prior to being able to formally apply, um, and that deadline is December thirteenth. Um, I don't know that ten thousand is going to get us. Far. Um, now there could be potentially other nonhistoric grants that we could look into. Um, sometimes I think it could be challenging to pit a, a historic renovation project against other communities that are putting up. Um, you know, big capital infrastructure projects. Um, so these are the ones that I have found that are specific. Historic properties where we might have a better opportunity for success.
They're all competitive, right?
All competitive.
Thank you, Megan. Appreciate it. Um, one last question. This is, I guess, more for Brian. Um, it's a two parter. Um, so one, have you been talking to anyone or any organizations who would be interested in potentially purchasing the property? And how does the fact that we are currently in a leasing, um, situation, which I think has nine years left on it? With the Historical Society, um, affect the sale? Am I, am I right up on that last point?
Yeah, so, so seven years and we would look into that. Um.
Okay.
You, you know. Speaking shooting from the hip here. I'd love to sell it to, to a nonprofit for a dollar and, uh, get it off our books. Look at how great the, the Hicksterns Museum is and run by that nonprofit. Absolutely beautiful building, amazing job, uh, that they do over there, the fundraising, the events. Um, I'd love to have that same exact, uh, model. Um, again, this is, this is just speaking more aggressively. I'd love to sell it to the store society for a dollar or whatever council, that's your decision, um, virtually giving it to them, um. And, and see where they go. And of course, availing like, like we do with other places, Megan, to assist with grant applications. Um, as best as possible, as we're doing with, uh, not Old Post Village, what's it called? There is an Old Post Village. Old Post Village, um, she's assisting with it and, you know, anyone else that comes in town that's a nonprofit that we can help, uh, Megan certainly. Uh, help with them, with that as well. Uh, so that, that's, that's kind of, you know, pie in the sky. Thoughts on it, Jacob? I hope I answered your question.
That's, that's helpful. I know, um, this is, this is kind of high level now, so I appreciate it. Um, alright, I'll stop. Um, sucking up all the oxygen, I'll, I'll let someone else speak. Thank you.
Yeah, just wanted to quickly, I, I feel like the first option, um, certainly would get us close. Um, because you were saying it was roughly two hundred thousand and, uh, or one covered by. Um, I think we were close to five when they had done the presentation, uh, kind of the peers, uh, structures and. Uh, similar refurbishments around that. Um. Would, would that be putting the cart before the horse a little bit if we were to be doing that and then selling it? Or that?
We're, we're going to spend, you know, four hundred and fifty thousand or even, even if like you say, if, if we get the grants and I don't, I don't like the likelihood of getting those grants.
Right.
Um, especially the full amounts, um. You know, you guys got to decide that, you know, do you want to, do you want to spend that money and then, you know, sell it for a lesser amount? You know, than you're going to get? I don't, I don't know what we would get for that in the open market. That's why I think the best scenario is to give it to a, um, a nonprofit. Especially, uh, uh, a hardworking, respectful one like the Historical Society, uh, for them to, um. Come through, you know, and, and, and take it, take, they would really care for the building. I think we're that way on this. It's been theirs for a long time.
That was just kind of brainstorming too. I mean, I remember years back for the, um. Well, I call it a couple, but it's not, the, the covering for the Congregational Church here.
Yeah.
That was donation to. The town, uh, residents, correct?
I don't know, that's before my time.
I remember this, there was a long, you know, one of those progress bars that shows what we had donated to in a, in a certain goal reached. Um, I feel like that would leave it up to the town to decide what to do with the jail. I don't know if we could reach, uh, obviously what we're looking at for refurbishments and things like that, but, uh. Was it really kind of just what's running through my head as far as trying to involve the town more? Um. Shaking off the couch for the pennies to, to quote you, but, yeah, it's all right.
Um, more of a comment, I, um, I, I think I agree with, uh, Brian, uh. You know, I think what it was a yearly like about thirteen thousand dollars, it's not a huge amount of money, but obviously places we can save, but I'm more worried about. Um, like the town liability, if, you know, there's any structural problems, obviously we could, we could just shut it down if that's where, where it goes. Uh, but also, you know, for us trying to, to run the cost for those things, I think certainly if there's a nonprofit that's willing to do that and take sort of over that. I think that's a great idea because I do love it. I, I would hope that it would stay the jail museum, um, but I, 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 I think your suggestion makes sense.
I mean, what's the point of the discussion?
Just, well, I have capital. And, you know, do I want to start? Do you want me to start inserting this in the capital plan? I can't put it in the capital plan for two hundred and fifty thousand, hoping that Megan gets two hundred. Um, that's, you know, we'd have to put it in for the full amount and go to debt, um, basically, uh, in our, in our capital. That's, you know, not taking into account thirteen thousand now, you know, where that was actually last year. God knows with electric and everything, where it will be over the, let's say, the next ten years. Um, it, it's a lot to think about. I'd love again for, for, um, the home team, the Historical Society to grab it, but there may be other nonprofits, uh, out there as well that could, that might want to sniff around and, and jump on it.
Should, so should we be having a, maybe more of a long-term discussion about the intention of this building? If the town decides to keep it, do we, we have to commit to funding to repair this building, get it up to code? Or if we go the route of selling it, do we put in stipulations, in very strict stipulations, house properties to be?
Um, it's going to fall into the historic district already.
Yeah, but, I mean, you know, I'm, I guess you have to look at the rules of the historic district. What, what sort of rule would allow that to, to interior?
Not a lot.
Yeah, can't touch the interior?
No, the.
Right, so I mean, we want to, we want to make modifications to that for this particular building. It's a beautiful building, but, you know, we have to ask ourselves questions too. Like, how many people visit this? Is it worth putting half a million dollars into a building that ten people are visiting? So, you know, I'm not saying.
It's more than that, um, but it's not a lot.
Questions that you get back.
Yep.
And then come up with a long-term, uh, decision about how we want to deal with this.
I, I would say that we have, this is the. At least the second time we had a discussion about this property in this term. There were certainly conversations in the past term about this property. Um, so we are having, these, this is part of these ongoing discussions. Uh, I did want to also say that. Um, Brian, looking for direction on the capital budget, obviously, we're not making a decision about the capital budget now, we have a process for that, so. Um, we can give them direction and then change our mind, but I, I agree with you. I think as a council. Perhaps tonight is the night to make those decisions, but to start to outline which direction are we thinking about going in and what are the next steps? Sure, seems to be a good goal for tonight.
Sure, yeah, no, it's a good start, but I think we need, we definitely need some more in-depth discussion about this, this.
I think by airing it out publicly will get, we certainly get some feedback, um, as it is, so, um, and, and help us. Uh, guide, uh, which we're looking to help.
It's kind of playing off like some of Joe's that branch, and I think, like, one of the buildings that comes to mind in the historic district is the Fields Parsonage. Uh, or Fields Range, depending on how far back you want to go, you know, if it wasn't for, you know. The, the family that's living there now doing a beautiful job, um, restoring it to that eighteen eighties, um, condition. What was the decision for that building before? And if, what, whatever decision that was to kind of play up of Jacob's apprehensions. I don't think that we should choose that route because what, what I know is that. The, uh, the building was decayed pretty rapidly before that, except maybe it did such a wonderful job, so. And to keep it a jail, you know, I love the talent in too, but it's a lot of it. Those are some of my apprehensions on losing some, some yard of the ball.
No, 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 I just agree with the, I mean, whatever, I'm certainly would be hesitant to, 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 not making decisions now, but to take on debt of how many dollars at this point without knowing. How many visitors, and maybe the other way.
Council Mari.
Maybe, um, yeah, so a couple thoughts. I, I think, um, as far as putting in the capital plan. You know, I think I echo everyone's concern so far about, you know, taking on, um, a large amount of debt. Um, for a building which does not get a whole lot of use at this time. Um, I, I do. I guess, I guess one way though, I do see it though, is at, at the end of the day, for now, it is a town building. Um, that is in disrepair and although we absolutely need to be like looking for a cost effective solution. Sounds like a buyer is the best, best answer, at least from what we know now. We, we should definitely be thinking about our capital plan conservatively as if we're not going to get a buyer, if that makes sense. I don't know, we, we should, we should see what the debt plan looks like with the money in there, um, because we just don't know exactly what's going to happen. Um, but in the meantime, in parallel, I think if the Historical Society is interested. Or if there are other nonprofits that are interested, we should definitely be, I would definitely encourage you and Brian, if you're not all ready to, to be talking with them. And, um, seeing what we can do here so that, um, we can come to some sort of arrangement where we can. Um, maybe do a Hicksterns like situation and, um, have a nonprofit run, run the building, own the building. And, um, pay for its expenses and everybody's happy. That's it.
Thank you. Can we just stand at ease for one, one minute, please? Thank you. Um, counselor. Yeah, thank you.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, I just, so when do you need to know about the capital with the amount of money? It's, we see it in December.
Like Jacob said, I'm likely going to move forward with trying to shoehorn that in there over the next five years.
Okay.
Um, and Lisa can give us a snapshot of what it's going to, uh, look like down the road, uh. So, you, you know, it's, it's up to, it's not up to me. You know, again, I, I, I think the best case scenario is what we discussed, but, um. Like Jacob said, I mean, we, we could, we could board it up down the road, you know, no one wants that. Um, if it becomes unsafe, so I, I think, you know, I have an obligation to make buildings safe, um, and, and get it into our capital plan.
Something I would want to know whenever we have this next part of the discussion is if the town, if. If the town is not selling it or at least it's not selling in the short term. Do we have to go out to debt now, five hundred thousand dollars for like, you know, I, I know we talked about like if you delay, things can get worse, right? I would just want to have a good sense of like, do we need to, to, to take on that debt now, right? Like, what?
We need to plan for it.
Hmm, yeah.
But as far as, you know, we would take on the debt when we're ready to, to start doing the, the building, that's when usually Lisa, uh, goes out to sell for it.
Mm-hmm.
When we start the project, you know, and so, um, it's not currently in the five-year plan, uh, but we want to get it in here.
And we don't make decisions about the capital plan again. Uh, you know, we'll see a capital plan in December. We have a public hearing in, yeah, February, thank you, and then it's built into our entire town budget.
Right.
So this is what direction.
Yeah, I know.
Want to ask Brian to start proposing.
Right.
Uh, but no decisions have, will be made.
No, no, and I'm saying, yeah, yeah. No, I, I, yes, I agree, and I'm just saying, I have. Some concerns about that, but we can talk about that.
Sure, sure.
One other question, your, your preference is to sell it to, uh, the historical society. Do we even know if they have half a million dollars to repair this building?
I don't, you know, or does another nonprofit or they want to start fundraising, you know, and they, you know, years to, to, to get us going. Um, I don't know that. And then, so then do we consider putting it on the open market? If they should get first bite at the apple, that's just. They've been there and they're important to the town, so, um, they've been maintaining it, so. Again, that's just my personal opinion, you know, as a, as a town, I have to plan to make buildings safe. Um, and usable and retain value for us, um, should we decide to, to keep it and use it as is or sell it? And that's the way I would likely have my capital plan.
And could you, or could you put it in the capital plan as well as start discussions with. The Historical Society or any other?
Potential private research on how we could do that.
Yeah.
Legally?
Yeah.
Um, and, and that would be step one.
Okay.
So yes, and I'm certain we'll get some feedback.
Okay. It sounds like there's interest from multiple council members about what, what would be involved in selling and how would that work? As well as, you know, your concern about C E for public buildings. And if it's put into the capital plan proposal, it does not have to stay in there if we make a different decision.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think we need a list of options, maybe four or five options. There's costs. Just results of, potential results of these options, and also a little bit of history about problems it's used. Making money off of entry fees, right, kind of just a little history of what's going on with it currently, or the past five years.
And I think when we saw, when we, it was official, when it was presented to us, the, the renovation plan, the historical society, the historical society. Was in support of those renovations.
Yes.
Uh, so they, they are requesting those renovations, so, um, and, and we told them at the time that you were exploring funding options. Funding options and that it was gonna be considered as something to talk about for our next capital budget, so we are fulfilling our commitment that we made to them when. That was first presented to us, but, uh, I agree, I think it would be good to understand. The appetite of the historic society, circle society, uh, for continuing to be in that building. And what are our options for sale or continued funding?
I have a quick question, just, uh, so this will always remain in the purview of the historic society, correct? This building itself.
They currently have a lease to it.
Okay, so.
Historic district commission, like the outside, like it's still, it's an historic di- district, right? But historical society, if we sold it to like private, or, you know, somebody else, they wouldn't, right, is that?
Well, yeah, and then the question that I was driving at was, per its location, would we have restrictions as to. Function, the building could serve, like, I know this might be illusions of grandeur, but. Um, folks always are asking for things through this town, exciting things to engage in history and also, um, leisure, you know, I think of. I think of interesting coffee shops that have split the gym, uh, you know, I, that, that's kind of where. I might, yeah, people yell at me for saying that, but, um.
Is that possible through what its location or not, can't be touched to change this function?
I think there's possibility about fee restrictions, right, like, that, that's always a possibility, so we, that would be part of what I think we'd be asking.
Okay.
Brian to look into, like, what are our options?
Yep.
You know.
Certainly one of them that comes to mind for me.
Sure, and if we're going to be essentially giving away the property, perhaps we wanna pursue fee restrictions. As a condition of transfer. Do you have any other questions? Sounds like we've given Brian a direct gift. You liked it so much, you laughed. So, uh, we'll, we'll ask Brian to come back to us with some options, but I do think one of those options has to be to keep it in the, but.
Thank you, thank you very much. This, this, this is really cool, are you doing the G I S working house?
Yes.
Nice.
Oh, uh, Megan, am I correct in that the four hundred and fifty thousand is our price with prevailing wages?
So the cost that they, that they have provided.
What I'm asking is, if a private person were to buy the house, or someone else were to buy the house, not the town. Would that cost be lower because of not, not having to do fair wages, right?
Yeah.
So then the number would be a lot less than four hundred and fifty is our price.
Five hundred, yes.
Thank you, sorry, uh, the five hundred is our price, it'd be much cheaper for, uh, a private entity, um, to do the repairs.
That's good to know.
Yeah, well.
But a large part of that engineering has already been done, right?
Yep, and the engineering's been done.
Right, so that's certain value with that, as well.
Any project over a hundred thousand, re- renovation or rebuild, reconstruction, the town has to use prevailing wages.
Thanks.
That's all.
All right, we'll move on to. Item eight point five, which is consideration of a resolution authorizing origination of the town purchasing cost, are we tabling this?
We are, if I can just briefly run through some stuff, Mike, my, uh, my real, uh, my real thing that I wanted to look at is updating some of these policies, and started out with the. Uh, basically the credit card and travel policies and such, I wanted to tighten that up, we did. Uh, but once we opened the door, realized there's a lot of other fixes that we, uh, we should be making. Um, so I'll be working with Lisa Hancock, uh, Mike Wilkinson, um, and Megan, as well as a lot of these purchases, like. We're doing construction projects and such, it just needs a lot, it's, it's well overdue for updating the entire policy. Uh, so this is one of those cases where you look under a stone, and unfortunately you find more under there, so. Uh, I'm, I'm respectfully requesting that you tabled this and at some point. Um, possibly even with the new financial director and Lisa together, um, we can work through this, so I, I apologize. Uh, we got the, I, I amended what I needed to amend, um, but now we need Lisa to work her magic down the road, so.
All right, we will table this item and look forward to further discussions on that. Um, item eight point six is the consideration of a resolution to approve necessary funds to ratify. The I F F, A F L, the I O, will, will be, uh, the, the collective bargaining, uh, with our firefighters.
Thank you, and so Mike Wilkinson, uh, is with us, and thank you, uh, Mike, for your work, uh, and attorney Mikhail, our, our labor attorney. Uh, for working through this, uh, collective bargaining agreement with our, uh, firefighters, so Mike, go ahead.
So, yes, as you know, we met, um, last, uh, winter, early spring about guidance from you, we, uh. Um, negotiated through, um, uh, in June and July with the, um, firefighters, and we got a settlement agreement. Um, the main issue, uh, as, as it often is, is wages, so there's. Three percent a year over three years, it's a three-year contract, um, there aren't a lot of other changes, um. There's no changes, uh, in healthcare or anything, uh, cost shares, those are remaining the same. Um, there's, uh, we're adding, uh, Juneteenth holiday, which has already been added into the other, uh, contracts and the personnel rules. Uh, we're adding in language similar to the other contracts and a non-union about how we, uh. Uh, give out sick leave, affront opposed to, uh, accruing it. Um, the union also wanted their schedules in the contract, which we didn't have a problem with, so those are gonna be added to the contract, so. Not a lot of changes, uh, within the guidance that, uh, you would kinda set out for us before we, uh, before we started, and, um. This, uh, this resolution will allocate that money, so we can, uh, get the, get the wages out to the employees back to July one.
Any questions about this? Question, is the funds for the wage adjustment built into our current operating budget?
Uh, yes, most of it is, uh, this might be a little difference, but it's only eight people, and we have other funds in the contingency where we could take it if needed, but there's. It, it should be fine, um, I can't remember exactly how much we budgeted, but it's pretty close to what we ended at.
Thank you. All right, without any further, see any further questions, is there a motion to approve the draft resolution for agenda item eight point six? By Council Shay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Moran, and we'll do. Oh, no, he's, sorry, uh, we'll do a roll call vote, Councilor Mari. Councilor Mari. All right, we'll come back to him. Uh, Council Mari. All right, we're gonna call it technical problems, oh, he says I in his, uh. Shout, I'm also an I, so that is unanimous, thank you, uh, for your work on this, Mike, as always.
Welcome, thank you.
Okay. Agenda item eight point seven is, uh, consideration of a resolution for supplemental appropriation. From C N R E for the purchase of a golf cart to be utilized by the rec department and the P C C. And inflatable boat to be used by the rec, public works, sergeant for maintenance of town parks and town land, and the fire department. For water marsh rescue operations.
That's a lot, um, so, so as you know, um, there was some excess equipment. Uh, again, shaking out the couch for the pennies, uh, we found a lot, a lot of equipment, uh, we had a good surplus, thirty-two thousand. Uh, was acquired through that. Uh, when we did it, my goal was to try to get a golf cart for the P C C. It would also, my goal was to get it for our rec department, uh, for Bruce, for the summer camps between, instead of taking a city car, you know, he can, he can zoom around in all the fields and such. Um, it, you know, we worked out storage, uh, with Scott Lappin over it, and, um, I believe this, is that the golf cart should be in the package, is in there, Sarah Beth? The bid?
Yes, yeah.
Yes, all right, the, the bid's in there, so that, the, the, the P C C, um, has a lot of stuff they have to do. Um, and so my goal was to try to make this easier on, and with the, with the B low property, hopefully down, uh. Right down here at one ninety-five, we can use that as a storage for both, um, so, like, I'd like to save the bales of hay, um, to some degree, but also, you know. Store the, uh, golf cart there. As far as the boat, um, I wanted a boat, I did not want it to be expensive, and I want it to be used by multiple departments. Um, to include D B W and our recs department for, uh, things in Crandall. We are likely, in all likelihood, purchasing the marsh, there will be an, an aggressive, um, kayaking program there. Um, and rumor has it, great fishing as well, I can confirm that, uh, so, we also have the snip. Um, as well, uh, and currently we have no boat, in fact, when the docks went out. The two D B W guys used that little couples paddle, foot paddle boat, um, to, to get out there. Um, we need some sort of operation for, um, Crandall's and the marsh, not even including rescue. So, so this is a, this is not a, a one-department toy, uh, this is a multi-department, multifaceted, um. Thing that's, can be picked up and carried, I wanted it to be lightweight, I did not wanna overspend, as, as. All of you are sure painfully aware of my position on, uh, buying apparatus, so, um, it's a modest inflatable. And the golf cart, again, uh, also modest.
Any questions?
So what have we been doing on a boat all this time?
We had a boat a long time ago, I'm told.
Okay.
We don't have it anymore, and it was a tin robo. You know, a metal shell robo, um, it was in disrepair, it's gone.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, all we have is that foot pedal, so if something were to happen in the snip, we don't have any way of getting, getting in there.
Right, I'm just, yeah.
We had a boat, the, the fire department had a boat years ago, uh, as well, um, so, yeah, right now, they're, like, when I said, put the dock back in the water. It was, how are we gonna do it, we don't have a boat. Um, and then with the marsh coming, and, you know, the all likelihood, it, we have the kayak loaning program. It's gonna be right around, the kayaks are right around the corner from the marsh, uh, I think it's gonna be, uh. A, a good attraction and getting something used for our town, and I think it's just makes good public safety sense. Uh, to have that as well on top of the other uses for it, and we're gonna likely wanna mark channels in the marsh, I know you've been there, but it's, um, confusing. Uh, around, you know, to, where the, where the navigated, navigated, navigable areas are. Um, are all things that we're gonna wanna start to, um, maintain.
Okay.
I just had some. So, you know, it's just a small boat, but there's, doesn't have to be registered or anything, 'cause you talk public safety, public safety's gonna use it. They're okay with it, what it is, and. Personal regulations, if safety's gonna use it.
Check, as a safe boating instructor for the state of Connecticut, and I, uh, done it for a lot of fire departments before.
Yeah.
Uh, I can tell you that they do not need a boater's license, and it does not, uh, need the registration, uh. You like to have that anyway, so, um, and, and, you know, anyone that would be driving the boat, we want them to have. Uh, at a minimum, their safe boating license, it would be a gas power, uh, modest, you know, something you could carry, uh, type of.
Okay, I know there were silly questions, but I don't really, I remember tin boats. By the ways, but, it's all right, thank you.
Yeah, the, since it went. Did you have any staff who was with the whole restriction for that?
It, it would only be on the snip if it were an emergency situation, or I wanted the, or John wanted his staff to get familiar with it. Uh, but that would all be worked out through Connecticut Water and the Association.
That was the side.
And when you override that, that's happened before, so.
Cause I figured that C S P had some kind of.
They do, they have a dive team, I believe the boat is in Newtown. Correct, but there's other fire departments that we can get here quickly, um, and we looked at that for the Crandall's, uh, thing, and it's. We were able to get it done with the little, uh, paddle thing.
Yeah.
Are we gonna move the boat around?
Little trailer.
Is that something they already own?
That's a part of it.
That's part of the breaks, I didn't.
Yep, I, I thanked Chief Whitel and his staff, I gave them a number, did not want them to go over it, um. They did a great job, that includes the, um, again, a little, it's a modest little trailer, you can lift it up with your pants.
I didn't see the. Trail, oh, here it is, the trailer modification. Is the trailer. Hundred and forty dollars on here, is that what, that?
Could be, I don't, I, I don't know, I know the trailer was included in it though.
Okay, uh, what about the golf cart?
What about it?
If we need to, you know, the P C C needs to move it somewhere for further away than.
Let's hope they don't, but, uh, we do like for something, and we have trailers to do that, it's just, you know, you see the trailers pop up on your. Capital plan, and even though those are massive trailers for heavy, uh, equipment, but we, Scott certainly has, he's. It's the golf cart was, um, Director Blackman's project, and he's well-equipped to move that. And again, the boat is liftable.
Sure, but not across from the snip to the bar machine.
No, no, theoretically, uh, but yes.
Quite a bit of trench, um, are there any interest applications?
We worked that out with Mike, but we'd add, we would add. The golf cart for sure, um, and John would add that, that was part of his fleet, however he would approach that.
Okay, so we don't anticipate. That's what it back for the.
And I'd wanna, and I did add the B low building to our insurance, um, once I learned there was, I gotta give them, there was a. Uh, so this would, you know, there would be no added insurance, we've already incurred that.
There's one follow-up, I know you've done a really good job about sort of going through town property that, you know, had been sitting there for years, we hadn't been using to sell, did. Does that like largely cover the, the expenses for this, like, like, the, the property that you sort of found that?
Thirty-two thousand we got from that.
Okay.
This is around twenty.
Yep.
Or so, so, uh, it's still a good chunk of change for the town, um, low maintenance on the golf cart and.
Yeah.
Uh, one of his assistant fire chiefs is a, is a full-time professional boat mechanic, uh, if we get the Yamaha or the, um. Uh, Suzuki, we'd be in great shape with that, uh, assistant chief or deputy chief.
Great, well, thanks for finding all those, that property and generating that revenue.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Danny, is there a motion to approve the resolution eight point seven in our package? Will by Council you to check, first, second by Council Shay, is there any further discussion? Okay, so we'll go do a roll call vote, Council Mari.
Me, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, good, hi.
Council Newton?
Hi.
Council Shay?
Hi.
Council you to check, Council Moran?
Hi.
And also a nine. All right, uh, moving along, item eight point eight, appointments to be, uh, vacancies on various municipal boards and commissions. We'll take it to re-put into the central region for us.
Yes, I believe this is President Lucy, is that right, yeah, um, so she's been, uh, currently serving on it, uh, puts in a lot of work, doing a great job, and I think. Would continue to.
Of course, I have no involvement in this, Council Moran to care this for us.
You're on the emails at least.
She does a great job, uh, on so many other things for us, she single-handedly runs the farmer, not single-handedly, I'm sorry. Uh, she's one of the main, uh, cogs with Sherry Sullivan and, uh, Mary Pat and Steve Lundgren. To run that farmer's market, but she really takes on a lot of that, um, she stepped up to help with the emergency committee as, uh. Uh, Colleen did to get the, the harvest fest off the ground, we didn't have a P C C. Um, and, and I've been working closely with her on some other things too, so she's, I highly, uh, appreciate the fact that you're gonna, uh. Keep her in that spot, so thank you.
Let me hear the, how about the miss, is there then a motion to approve the three of mine?
So moved.
Move by Council Moran, there's a. Second by Council Union, we'll do a roll call vote on this, Council Mari. I think we heard you say aye. All right. Councilor Union.
Hi.
Council Shay. Council you to check. Aye. Council Moran.
Aye.
I'm also. All right, we are moving on to item nine, which is old business of which we have none. Item ten is their report of the town.
Great, thank you. Um so let's start with the scarecrow and uh contests and harvest best. Take a look at the scarecrows out there. We did really really well. Um and I thank everyone that's uh been involved and I, uh Mary Pat, you're here. Thank you for guiding us uh through the transition. Um I would love to thank Linda Byam for having a sister-in-law, uh Tricia, uh who's just been, I I what a great chair for that to to fall right into. Um she is, she has really done a lot of work. Uh Colleen and her have been uh fantastic. Bruce Watt, uh fantastic in getting all the vendors. We're gonna have food trucks, um two beverage trucks, a coffee truck. Um and and weather looks good uh for Saturday morning. I'll be there. There'll be a kid zone now. Uh we're really looking to expand it and make it our uh signature uh town event. Have the green looking great. Uh this the the scarecrow voting is, thank you Colleen for uh working with Trish, setting that up is ongoing right now.
And Sarah Beth, I helped the QR.
And 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 Sarah Beth, sure, um and that. So we'll start promoting. I'll start, I should have done it today, but I'll start tomorrow, pushing really hard for that. Uh for Saturday and and we really look forward to it. I I'll briefly touch on the school lockdown yesterday. I I I will say this, there are systems in place at a national level uh that are are meant to protect the school. There are drills done at a local level um and trainings done at the local level. All of those things worked properly yesterday um in how this was detected um and then with the state police uh and and superintendent Will and in in ensuring that everyone was safe. So uh it was reassuring for me as a as a former law enforcement professional to see that the protections came in at a national level and I'll leave it at that um for for this to be picked up and and handled and I hope those involved get the the help that they need uh to get through this, so. Um it's while it's a a good drill for our schools as as a law enforcement professional, you don't like to see these types of things happen, but man, what a great exercise for the professionals involved in it as it is completely by surprise and and an unknown when it occurs. Uh I think Council and Shay, you run up the sample of water commission. It's going well. Um it it is, it is slow. And there is a lot to work through um with a lot of the one-offs. Uh but I believe we are making progress. I, the bad belly has been handling herself uh on the town side and Connecticut Water's been a good partner in that as well. I see a much more positive outcome on the horizon than previous times that attempts have been made uh to sell uh the water commission. Suffice to say, as I've said it before, uh the town is not in a position to ensure um we don't have the staff to run a a water utility here. Kira wants us out of the water business. Department of Public Health wants us out of the water business. Um and hopefully we can get that uh moving through in the coming months. Director Lappin in the Parks Garage, uh you saw there was, well, you might have saw there's been engineers on site shooting, um you know, getting their getting uh their measurements uh and everything in place. We hope to have this out to bid uh by the end of the month. Um and hopefully everything buttoned up in December. Uh that will have implications, may or may not have implications to ARPA if we're uh under on the bid. Uh while I'm in the ARPA neighborhood and coming, where Jacob mentioned it before. When I first got here, we we threw um about seventy thousand roughly speaking to the uh baseball and softball. My only uh request to the little league was make sure you divide that up equally between the 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 boys, the baseball and the girls softball. Uh so I was very happy to see uh this softball uh scoreboard coming in. Um that will be at the current middle school. Um field there. That field is also first up for our DPW. I I invited our director go to the maintenance of the fields and I'm like a re-scarfying, re redoing the grass, uh redoing the fields essentially um was done willy-nilly. Uh Director Watt, working with the rec commission, did a great job in coming up with the schedule, moving forward. So we know that in five years, we're gonna do this field and do seven years this field. Uh right now, I think up up this year or next year is the girls softball field, which will be the first one. Again, that was at the request uh of Walt, uh Dr. Willett. I mean, to really take a a look at it. Uh we concur it. It's uh top of the list um to get going. Uh Megan uh has been uh doing a lot with shared services. She attended the CROG meeting today. Uh we are really pushing hard for shared services with our animal control and to, and if I haven't mentioned it before, um we are gonna need a new animal control facility. One way or the other, one way or another, it's we need it. It's gonna be in our capital plan if it already isn't. Um the cost will be around a million dollars. I am trying to get Wellington and anyone else that wants to share in that um to assist. Megan, I have great hopes for um getting us steep funding for a lot of that, a lot of that. I believe with the two towns, we can work that out even better. While we're in the neighborhood of sharing a building, we're also uh working with CROG on uh sharing the uh staffing as well um and really really moving to regionalize. Uh I'm told that Ashford uh wants in on the game. The last time we had checked with Ashford last year, it was an an issue with CROG, not because they're not in CROG, but like I believe we've worked through that. Um and Megan, you know, again, attended a meeting today on it. We've had a few meetings with uh Wellington at our facility, at their facility, um just just kind of working through it. The the crux of the matter is the state of Connecticut came through to every town and um inspected their um animal control facilities and uh said, here's a list of uh new uh new new design features that you need to have in your animal control feature and we're gonna give you five years to do it. Um and ours is barely meeting them now, uh the to keep it open now, so uh we need, we need to to take some action. I'm gonna try to do that. Um with shared services. Lot of openings. Um as you know, the senior center director, they ran some interviews um this week. They put forward two names to me. Uh I will, I will uh work with uh Mike Wilkinson in selecting from those uh two candidates they sent forward. Uh in the in within the next couple of weeks, two to three weeks, I believe we wanna start doing the finance director. We look for that person to come on in uh immediately after the new year. Uh there'll be some overlap with Lisa. Obviously, she's gonna leave in early February. Uh we're gonna look to ARPA to um cover that overlap as we didn't fund for in the in a in our budget last year for this overlap as we didn't know exactly when it was gonna occur. Uh thankfully, we do have, we can bring it to the ARPA commission um and get their uh opinion on it. Electronic recycling is a big one. That's coming up Saturday, October nineteenth. We'll start pushing that hard. It's always been a a pretty big success and I think the certain team always uh comes out and uh does a great job uh with that. Um.
Good, good.
Okay, um the electric blue and the zoning issue is it has become a legal issue. I can't say much other than that is ongoing. Um and we met uh this week. Uh more to come on that, but there's there's the zoning issue with that. Uh the sidewalk uh issue, the ADA sidewalk on the green is ongoing. We did get some good news uh that Kerma is gonna pay for our legal services in that lawsuit, so we will not have to incur um any more money in in that uh battle moving forward in this current case. The capital budget process is underway as as department heads are starting to submit those. You heard somebody said, was it you said that the Economic Development Commission has an opening? We'd love to get somebody uh on that. Jacob, thank you. So a lot of great programs in the library. Library just does such a great job. Um if you just read through the Super Life of Owls, I'd love to attend that. Um in fact, I'm going to. When's your chair hour? I'll come see you and go check out the owls right after that. So they did, they do a great job there. Marion's just been uh fantastic. Um. We are, Megan's working um to have a project in the can ready to go, engineered and ready to go, connect the green to our businesses down here. You know, this this bottleneck through here with with a sidewalk uh through there. A couple of creative ways. We're we're using our, one of our new engineering firms, which she's also working with. Um Dr. Jack, Eric Jackson up at the Yukon Highway Safety Institute, I believe is what it's called. Some students or uh she had some students out there. They're also gonna submit some designs and plans as well. Um that at some point we would apply for a grant uh to have that um built. So we, my intent is not for the town to pay for those sidewalks. If we can get a grant, um we'll have that ready to go. And a lot of, for those who don't know, a lot of times when you apply for a grant, they want you to already have those designs in hand. And so that's the purpose of us designing it ahead of time, so we have it in the can, we're ready to go. Um and because we we missed out on it in years past as a result of not having it. Um uh something ready to go right away. So you gotta spend the money on the engineering to apply for the grant. Tip is is what uh is happening in that case. Pickleball courts at Heron Cove, uh concrete is being poured tomorrow. Go ahead and uh drive up and take a look. And I believe that is all I have. Yes, that was it. Thank you.
Questions? Um. For the animal control facility, I know uh begin June, the June bond commission meeting, um there was at least one award. Um I think Urban Act Award to Montville, maybe for their animal control facility. Um have there been talks with our legislative delegation about asking for them to sponsor uh a request for our town to pay for this during state funding?
Steep is our goal. The steep grant, right? Is that accurate? Megan, we want to be steep grant.
That's what we've been pursuing up to this point.
And discussed with uh Martin Heft today um as well, so uh we are working on this state uh to pay for it.
But the steep grant were uh generally, they like to.
Twenty percent.
Twenty percent. Um had there been discussions with the legislative delegation, asking them to sponsor a request for the the state to pull it?
Not yet, but if we split that with the town of Wellington, we're down ten percent, uh but I'm happy to do that. And I'm sure they're happy to hear that.
Yeah. Councilor Mari.
All right, um so thanks Brian for your report. Um for the garage, um the rec department garage that we're we're using the ARPA funds for. Um good to, thanks for the update up on that. I was wondering, is it possible for the next council meeting or maybe the next apartment meeting, if we could get like kind of just a high-level timeline of that project? Um just since we are getting kind of close to the end of the of the ARPA funding, um I I think it would be useful to to get a little bit of visibility up to that on paper.
I I'm happy to have uh Director Lap and come. I I asked him that this morning, you know, anticipating that that question tonight. Uh is the engineering is finishing up now.
Mm-hmm.
They hope to have everything done within the next week or two and go out to bid within the next uh two weeks or so. Uh and the bid will be two weeks uh after that. And then so hopefully we're able to secure a um contractor at that point and to cover the money.
Okay, I'm trying to do the mental math in my head. This is like end of November, maybe. We're hoping to get the money under contract?
Exactly.
Okay, okay, that'd be good. Yeah, no, I think um if 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 we could just get something high-level up on paper, just just for reference, that would be great, but thank you, Brian.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, you had a full game in there. Uh I drove by here until, cause uh it looks like they're doing some work down there for the squash courts.
Pouring tomorrow.
Really?
Yes, concrete's being poured tomorrow.
All right.
They're not squashed there.
Sorry, yeah, sorry. Pickleball.
Any other question? Okay. We will move on to item eleven, which is adoption minutes. Um we're gonna consider this September twenty-four, twenty twenty-four minutes. We'll go there, but we might wanna consider twenty-six minutes. We'll just stay twenty-four. Um is there a motion to approve this September twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Council Moran. Is there a second? Second, second by Council you to check. Is there any discussion about these events? Okay, we shall do a roll call vote then. Councilor Mari.
Hi.
Council Newton. Council Shay.
Hi.
Council you to check.
Aye.
Council Moran.
Hi.
Also. House, thank you. Correspondent to Council, also you to check.
Thank you. So just a few. I, one of them was they were expressing their support for item eight, eight point three. Um and just be eight point similar group point. So eight point three there in support for um then another one came in to work together and educate people positively, meaning for the upcoming election. Um and then the other one, as you heard Sophia speak earlier, was regarding, we've got several regarding that PCC Facebook page. I believe Brian's been working on that, so I believe that's all that's coming. Yeah, I missed the name, please.
Sure, I have one to add in that we got a letter.
Oh, sure.
This is a letter from FEMA um regarding the flood insurance rate map which were issued April first nineteen eighty-two. And we received communication in uh November twenty sixteen informing us that the flood hazard mapping for our town will continue under FEMA risk mapping assessment and planning program. Um and they are doing improvements to that program and we're updating the engineering analysis. Um they're having a community review workshop on Tuesday, October twenty-ninth at nine AM, virtual. If anyone is. That's. Um. The item thirteen is chairperson's report. Uh as Brian mentioned, I uh chair hour Thursday this week, uh thirty-seven thirty at the library. It looks like I I have a thirty-minute window to go see the owls before I start, so thank you for reminding me that the owls are there on Thursday. Um I wanted to extend my uh appreciation uh to Dr. Willett for the communication on the lockdown. He was here today as a parent. I was grateful, appreciative and reassured by the communication I received. The budget impact to provide mental health support services that our school are really highlighted with this incident as education costs increase faster than funding increases. We see one example of the impact, these short calls, fortunately. Um I also wanted to share with the council that I reached recently, um last week, there was a panel um opened by Governor Lamont. Um there were some uh state officials uh who participated in the panel. Uh and it was on LGBTQ plus participation in government. Um and I thought it was very interesting um to see Eric Russell there uh to understand efforts being made by statewide marketing to attract uh various or to capitalize on some of the marketing opportunities that have recently come up um and how um they're inviting more LGBTQ plus community members to participate in government. So I just wanted to share that. I thought that was really well done. Um there were a lot of very interesting people there, but also uh some success stories of um members of that community who are participating in government and the importance of having that uh representation. And as a member of the community, I was especially pleased with the direction that was going. I want to share that with the council. Um also, if for those of you who didn't notice, it's bowl pickup week. Um I um my bowl pickup has already been scavenged, which is my personal favorite part of this whole week is the scavenging. Um because it's cool to see other people's use trash uh for various unknown reasons, so hopefully that, I know it always runs a little late because we have a lot of trash. Um so hopefully uh it doesn't run too late. Last week, last year, I think by the end of the second week, it was all gone. So hopefully we're on schedule to to stay on track uh for that. I'm kind of excited to hear about electronic recycling too, because now that I think of that, I might have. I'm excited to hear about electronic recycling too, because now that I think of that, I might have a few things for that as well. Thank you for the call. All right, and next is communications and petitions from council persons. You go first, Joe.
I just wanted, I just want to say, to you Lisa, I know you're a property guy in Florida. And I hope that it survives the storm, the upcoming storm. Hopefully, not damaged. And it seems like everybody these days has a relatively poor, so I wish everybody's families the best. Lots of this, they remain safe, this potentially storm, storm. Hopefully, Lisa, you come back with the news, New York, who you said you're.
Thank you. So I just wanted to thank all the volunteer and ran the race, the side rail race over the weekend. Said it to not too far earlier and I echo what Katie just said, thanks to state police, the fire department, of high school staff and of course, the students. They just handled it great. So I knew I could feel comfortable with my kids, especially get shots. With all the updates that the superintendent was giving. So it was really well done and I hope whoever it was gets the help they need. So also, over the weekend, it was a busy weekend. I stopped by the open house of the fire department, town fire department, they had all the trucks out, everything out. They're always looking for people to join there. The, oh, that, no, the kid won, the
It's Lawrence.
Oh, thank you. So they actually got three teenagers to sign up. Well, you know, at least I was there, I was there for a little bit, but yeah, that is really great. Ryan touched on it too, forty five Scarecrows out on the green. Trish has been doing an amazing job as chairs. I figured she would, we walked several times out there. Today, we put QR codes, did a post on TPN, there's four of them out there. So just brings you right to the link to, hopefully, they survive out there, something new. And then thanks to the Lions Club for lending their tent for Saturdays. So a lot of good things going on in busy month of October. So that's really all I wanted to say.
Yes. Councilor Mari.
Yeah, thank you, Katie. So just wanted to follow up with something I brought up in the, the last meeting regarding like a, a like a monthly report to, to council about just contaminated well activity. Like a, just, just a brief list of any meetings that were held and any key decision points that could go out to the council to keep a surprise of, of the situation. I, I saw your, your email earlier this week, Brian, about an executive session, which I think, I think that's, that's a good idea. But just wanted to just, just poke you a little bit up on that, that report idea. Yeah.
Okay, worry, Jacob. I, I, I was lost when I read your email, but absolutely, my, I'll work with Mike Wilkinson on getting that update.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it, Brian. That's all.
We will move on to item fifteen, which is public participation. This is on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a three minute limit. If you're in the room and you'd like to speak, we ask you to come up to the table. If you're able, give us your name and address. If you're on Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand. We'll again ask for your name and address and we'll alternate back and forth between the in-person room and the virtual room. And we will start with George and your awesome t-shirt.
George, fishing game. You were doing good until you got to the contract. I understand the horses already left the building, so it's a little late to close the door. But given the history of this town and state and government, they will come up with a new holiday. When is a town ever going to say no? Just because the federal government says, oh, we got to do that, be politically correct. And then Hartford and Bridgeport and New Haven says, oh, we got to be politically correct. Why this town? Why can't you say, what holiday are you going to give up if this holiday is so important to you? Few years ago, there's a big uproar about Columbus Day. And they said, oh, wow, we can give up a day? Oh, no, let's make it Indigenous People Day. Well, duh, indigenous people were here over two thousand years ago. Columbus didn't discover anything, he invaded. So as would sort of the rest of them. But anyways, my point is, let's stop always giving away stuff. When are you going to say no? The average worker, look at the people, the sanitation people that come around. They get six holidays a year. What's the talent up to now, twelve, fourteen? It's ridiculous. And it all comes out of the taxpayers' pockets. And if you really want to get to the one that really galls me is Veterans Day. Why do people have Veterans Day off? People should be in school, the kids should be in school, they should be learning about veterans. Have veterans go to the school and talk to these people. The only people that should get Veterans Day off are veterans. The people that put their lives on the line, whether they, they chose, they got to go out to war or not. They went in and they did their service. We're the only ones that should even get recognized for that day. And yet, when I came back, everybody would have bad mouthed us. What we did was like the worst thing in the world. And they were protesting at all the colleges and stuff. Which is another thing, why are we always protesting at the colleges against the Jewish people when nobody is protesting against Russia? It's just, you know, they're the ones that invaded, they're the mass murderers. Anyways, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Kathy Bock got home.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for taking up the issue of the jail museum. And I'd like to thank Megan for spending copious hours going through grants, because that's not easy. The Talon Historical Society is happy to discuss either option, either the continuation of leasing with the town. But please, could you raise our rent? We've asked you to do it before. We think a dollar is ridiculous and we've said that before. I think a reasonable rent is, would make sense. And we'd certainly think we could share in the, in the cost of repairs. Or we'd be happy to discuss the purchase of the building. We've discussed that with the council in the past and we'd like to discuss it again. So if you would like to sit down with us, we'd be happy to do that. We think that makes sense and we'd like to discuss that with the council. So either option is, is certainly something we would take up with you. But we'd like you to, to also understand that we have put, as we've talked about before, we've made a tremendous monetary investment in that building. Not the outside, because it's your building and you've always taken care of the outside, except for the last ten years. We've put close to a quarter of a million dollars into the interior of that building, both in our society funds and personal funds by our members. It houses all kinds of collection of the town, both family collections, individual collections. Some of those pieces are three hundred years old. It's Talon's story. I don't know what you would do with it if you sold the building to somebody else. It is a wonderful home. It's been the home of Talon's story for over sixty years. So it's something to think about. It's kind of a neat place. It's kind of become the place where people go. And I think it's, it's something you've, we've all lost sight of. It's, it's like everybody who lives near Washington DC forgets to go to see the treasures that are there. We forget to go see the treasure that's right in the center of our town. Let me assure you that even though the town in the last ten years hasn't really done a good job of taking care of it. We have, don't get me wrong, the ADA ramp needs replacing. We have been taking care of it. It is secure. Our maintenance guys have gotten underneath on their bellies and secured it. And the front porch is stable. It's not going to stay there that way forever, but it is secure because we won't let guests in the building if they're in trouble. But I wanted to make the council feel secure about that. As I mentioned, let's see. Oh, just to make a comment, because I was kind of hurt. And I think some of our members who've been texting me, because they've been listening to you. HIX is a wonderful organization and it has a beautiful museum, but they have used us as their model. They were a beautiful building that was starting to go into disrepair and it was never opened. They have asked us many times and we have encouraged them many times to open. They have asked us what our model is and we have asked them to open their doors and to do so, especially when we're open, so that we can send visitors back and forth up and down the green. So just to let you know, our museum is open every Sunday, starting on Memorial Day, which is when we have determined that crowds start to come out on the green and we stay open through September. Now, we've also noticed since the green market has come onto the green that we start to have some special programming through October and November sporadically as people are available. Because there has been some activity on the green, but we're open every Sunday. Most of those Sundays have either a special program or a workshop every Sunday. That takes a lot of volunteer effort and a lot of programming. Those are things that don't go on at the other museum town. Other things that happened. Besides Sundays, we have hours on Monday mornings, every Monday, some other hours, other days of the week. We are open to private tours, which are requested almost once a week. We have film groups coming in almost monthly now, because we affiliate with the Connecticut film industry. We also collaborate with the Smithsonian Institute, because we get publicity from them on a national level. We are open once, once a year with them. Connecticut Tourism, because we get publicity from them. The new, the Endowment for the Arts, Blue Star Families. So we have all that national and state recognition. So we have a lot of collaboration.
Thank you.
I wanted you to be aware of those types of things. Just to let you know, two special programs coming up. October nineteenth is the Cranberry Tour with Vernon and Ellington. We have a bus leaving from the parking lot at the Military Museum. And for those of you who knew the Bob Noonan family or went to school with his kids, his, they're doing the Bob Noonan story by some of his children will be in our shed on Sunday, the twentieth. So thank you for your time. Look forward to talking to you about what we can do with that building, because I'd love to have the outside looking as good as the inside again. Thanks for your time tonight. Have a great weekend. Enjoy the fall weather. Good night.
Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak? Anyone else on Zoom? Seeing no other public participation, we are on to item sixteen, which is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Okay, so second by Councilor Moran, is there objections with adjournment? The objection, out of objection, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.